Tonight is our regular scheduled Jacksonville City Council meeting, Tuesday, March the night, 2021, at 6:00 PM. I will call our meeting to order, and I will ask all of us to stand, and Pastor John Atkinson from the People's Church will bring our invocation, followed by the pledges. Brother John.
Would you join me in prayer? Our Heavenly Father, we're grateful today for life. We thank you for the many blessings that you give to us each and every day. Lord, we thank you for this council and each one, God, that you have placed in positions of representation and authority. God, we pray tonight that you'll give wisdom and that everything that is said and done will be done for your glory. Lord, we pray your continued protection and blessing on all of our public servants, Lord, the police, fire, EMS, military, God, those that serve in hospitals, doctors, and nurses, and those, God, that keep us well. We pray that you will continue to bless and continue to keep them and continue to keep our community safe. In Jesus' name, amen.
If you'll join me in the pledges. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now, the Texas flag. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible. Thank you. Our next item is gonna be a special presentation. Sergeant Penning, Officer Dina Wilde, and I think Chief is gonna come take care of that.
Well, now, then, we get to do promotions in our place, and recently, we had a sergeant pending. We have to pass it across us, and then Dina Wilde came up top, so she promoted her to sergeant. Tonight's the ceremonial penny. And for the motoring public who knows Dina firsthand on the radio day show, is now on night patrol, go out and do whatever you can. But I'll give you some words from the curtain, and you always gotta read my little hymnal. I'll keep Mr. Short, but President Calvin Coolip said a long time ago, no one is compelled to choose the profession of a police officer, but having chosen it, everyone is obligated to perform its duties and live up to the high standards of its requirements. So as a sergeant, I need you to read that each and every day. Deal?
Deal.
All right, you gotta take that thing off before I'm gonna do any of this pen. We're very proud of you. Look forward to working with you in your new, your new role, taking care of our guys and our ladies, and congratulations.
Thank you.
That's one of those brand new ones, and that's been broken in. Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
You bet. Our next item, we're gonna move, since the police force is here, we don't have any citizens' participation on item 12, so we're gonna move item 12 up and take care of it first, then we'll get back to our citizens' participation. So item number 12 is to discuss and consider with possible action, purchase of radio equipment for fire and police departments and emergency management.
Yes, Council, as you recall, over the past three to four months, the city has been working on looking at upgrades to our emergency services radio system, police, fire, and emergency management. After countless tests, maps being run, and looking at the entire system, staff does have a recommendation, and the recommendation is to convert over to a P-25 digital system for our primary fire, primary police, and then an additional channel for emergency management that could be used in a special circumstance where one of the two primary frequencies went down. In addition, we will maintain our analog current system for both police and fire. After reviewing all the tower sites in the city limits, as well as potential new tower sites, it has been determined that the best site is going to be to build, erect a new tower behind the public safety complex. That was already in the original budget of the building. We are gonna go from 120 feet all the way up to 240 feet, and then to put a 20-foot antenna on top of that. So that is the plan. The fire department's new repeater will be directly below about 30 feet from the police department, so it'll be right at 210 feet in the air. With those two, it gives us 95% coverage off the maps for all of our public safety radios. Part of this program is also purchasing new radios, and so for the police department, every officer that is a certified officer will be receiving a new handheld radio, lapel mic, and all of the components to go along with that, as well as every firefighter will be getting a new portable radio with lapel mic and all the necessary items for theirs. As far as the car radios go, all the police department vehicles that are primary patrol units and the three administration units will also be getting a new mobile radio. In the fire department, we have some radios that have been replaced in the past 24 to 36 months, and those still have plenty of life left in them, so we are not going to replace those at this time. All of the existing radios that are P-25 compliant and digital, which is all, or most all of, the fire department radios, will be put into use for spare radios for when existing new radios could potentially go down, whether it's damaged during a call, all the different things that do happen to our radios, and we've had one radio damaged in the last, or destroyed, I think is a better way to put it, in the last two months from the police department that it got into a pursuit with an individual that was not doing the right things in the community, and that radio was destroyed beyond repair. So we will have spares. We will also have extras for any incoming agencies that may be helping us, whether it is a fire call, a police call, or whatever the situation may be. So tonight, the action item is to purchase the equipment. There will be a change order come back from the building contractor, Barry and Clay, for construction of the tower. So we do have money budgeted in the building, but we will do a change order to increase the height of it. In addition to that, we will be continuing to use the existing tower that is at the fire station right now, and with that, we'll do some relighting of that tower, as we've discussed in our workshops. At the downtown fire station location is where we will put the emergency management frequency, and then we will relocate the PD's analog as their backup channel to that tower. It's the closest site that we have to the existing tower that they're using right now, which is at the police department. It is approximately the same height, so we should be doing good with covers for that. In addition to the new tower, we will also be having additional space available if there's another emergency service agency in the county or in the area that may need access to that tower. There is some advantages to that tower. After discussing it with the police and fire chief, it is my recommendation and our recommendation that we only use that tower for public safety. We do not allow that tower to do anything else. We will get requests for cell phones, and we'll get requests for other individuals to use it, but we will be reserving that strictly for public safety. So tonight, the recommendation is to approve the purchase of the radios, the repeaters, as well as the installation for this project. That amount comes to $234,678.4. It is being purchased under the HGAC contract 18-00267, and that allows the city to purchase all of these items through a purchasing co-op, and we have used HGAC before. So tonight, the action is recommending approval for mobile communications in the amount of $234,678.4. It will come out of our current operating budget or reserve funds for this year, and everything else will be handled with the building changed once we get the final price for the requirements there, and then we will have some minor expense once the current fire station site plans are finally decided to. We know we're talking about demoing that building, but that action formally hasn't been approved by the council, although that's what we've talked about. At that point in time, we will have to put some type of structure to handle those repeaters at that location. Does council have any questions?
And this gives us 95, 96% coverage?
The way, the way it is designed, it will give us 95% coverage on a handheld inside the city. When you go to the car radios, it's, it's gonna be more than enough for the car radios, but it's a 95% coverage for handhelds.
So I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion, and we purchase the radio equipment for the fire and police departments.
Have a motion by Councilman Rob Goen, second by Councilman Hubert Robinson. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carried. Now, we'll go back to our regular agenda, and I'd also like to recognize, tonight in our audience, we have Sheriff, Cherokee County Sheriff Britt Dixon here. We appreciate you coming. You bet. You bet. Item number five is citizens' participation. This is the time where we set aside a few minutes to, to hear citizens, if they want to come and speak on a, on an item. We try to ask you to limit your comments to three minutes, and we have, we cannot take any action. We just wanna hear your concern. We have two tonight. It looks like they're speaking maybe on the same item. Our first one, in no order, is Dr. Sam Hopkins. If you'll come, state your address, and you have three minutes.
Your Honor, the mayor, distinguished members of the council, city manager, and all you hardworking department heads. I speak in favor of item 15. At first, I would like to congratulate Dr. Deborah Burkett, who will be speaking next, on the publication of her latest book, which is Remembering Those Buried Beneath the Cedars. This is of historical interest to East Texas, and particularly to Jacksonville. Secondly, I want to commend her for the work that she has done with the Cherokee County Historical Commission in preparing a historical marker for Jacksonville in regard to recognizing the railroad. A lot of people don't remember those tracks used to go right through the park here. I couldn't tell you how many years ago they disappeared, but it's long enough now that if we don't have some kind of recognition that we used to have that spur, I think it could be lost to memory. I know that you're going to have to consider where it goes, but may I urge you to work that out, because I can tell you from previous experience, that even if tonight you said, "We know exactly the spot. We wanna put this thing," the State Historical Commission will take a while to get that marker cast at a foundry back here, and I'm not exaggerating. If we started this very moment, we would be lucky to get it back here and installed by 2022. I have a particular interest in that, because that will be the year of our city's sesquicentennial, and I'm very eager to help promote the observance of that. I think this marker would be a step in that direction. I thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you. Next up is Dr. Deborah Burkett.
I really didn't ask him to talk about the book.
Oh.
But we're on sale in the lobby.
Very good.
I'm like Sam. It's an honor to be here tonight to speak to all of you. My name is Deborah Burkett. I live in Mixon in North Cherokee County, and I'm here to discuss the proposed state marker, which is item 15 of tonight's agenda. Since I've been a member of the Cherokee County Historical Commission, I've worked on four state markers which have been approved, the latest of which was the Old Fred Douglas School in Jacksonville. On behalf of my colleagues in the County Historical Commission and our chairman, Nadine Locke, raise your hand, Nadine. She's with us tonight. She's our chair. I want to say that all of us in the county commissioner, commission are very excited about the possibility of a marker to coincide with the 150th anniversary of Jacksonville. We voted in our last Historical Commission meeting to pay for the marker, which is $1,800. The topic for the marker is the coming of the railroad and the establishment of new Jacksonville in 1872. As you know, old Jacksonville was established on Gum Creek in 1847, but relocated to where we are now when the railroad came through. In this broad topic, several other areas will be researched and submitted in the marker application. For example, those who worked on the railroad, including Mexicans and Hispanics, also the history of the city park property, the rail outlet that ran from Tyler to Lufkin, and the first mayors of Jacksonville will be researched. A major mission of all historical commissions in the state of Texas is to work and submit marker applications. Currently in the state, there are over 16,000 markers. This includes 3,800 Texas historic landmarks. Historic landmarks are markers for buildings. This just illustrates to all of us in the room tonight what a rich history we have in Texas. Two aspects of the marker application process quickly I want to share. Number one, there is no guarantee the State Historical Commission in Austin will approve any application. If we are approved, that's just one phase of the process. The next is to wait our turn while the marker is forged. Each year, there could be 200 to 300 or more markers to be forged, and we would be waiting in line for our turn. Number two, members of the Texas Historical Commission in Austin are the ones who decide if a topic is historically significant or not, and they are the ones in Austin who write the story for the marker. After we locally do all the research and documentation, they actually write the words for the marker. In closing tonight, as I said, the County, Cherokee County Historical Commission is very excited to work on this marker, and we seek your support and approval for the marker to be erected in the Hazel Tiffin Park. Thank you.
Thank you. You bet. Appreciate that. Was there anybody else that did not sign up that would like an opportunity? Okay. If not, item number six, we will hear and receive information from Patillo, Brown, and Hill on the 2019-20 audit. I think we have a representative who'll come talk to us about this very exciting topic.
I'll do my best.
Great.
Thank you all for having me tonight. Are you all comfortable with me taking the mask off while I speak?
Totally.
All right. Well, thank you all for having me tonight. My name is Kent Willis. I am the audit manager in our government audit department at Patillo, Brown, and Hill. I've worked with Jacksonville for a few years now, so if, as I progress tonight, if you have a question or an area of interest, stop me at any time. I'm happy to answer questions as I go. My goal tonight is to keep this fairly brief. I just wanna touch on the good news that I've got to share with you all, a brief financial highlight, and then something a little different for the audit this year related to the coronavirus pandemic we've all been through. I wanna touch on that a little bit, how that affected the financial statement audit. So if you wanna follow along, I'll mention some page numbers as we go, but if not, that is fine. We're gonna start with the comprehensive annual financial report, which you'll find with a nice color front on it. The first thing I wanted to start with, actually this time, is general fund, fund balance. If you wanna turn with me to page 16, I thought I might just touch on that for a second. That's an area of interest, of course, for leaders of a municipality, as well as the citizens. So page 16, if you'll turn with me there, we're looking at the, these are the major funds for the city of Jacksonville. I wanna hone in on that general fund column there on page 16. So if we look down towards the bottom, we'll see net change in fund balance for the year of about $1 million. So about a $1 million increase over FY19. So you began the year at about 1.9 million, and you ended at about 2.9 million, or about three months' worth of fund balance, which is a good place to be. I think the recommended minimum is about two months, and that's the bare minimum. So you guys are, you did add to fund balances here and ended up in a good spot, which is commendable considering the crazy year we've all been through. This time last year, we had no idea was sales tax gonna totally tank. Fortunately for you and for many of our municipalities, that did not happen, but we had no idea what to expect. So to be able to add to fund balance, to have a strong cushion down there, it was commendable for this crazy year. So I wanted to point that out initially. From there, I'm gonna turn back to Roman numeral six. So kinda going backwards here. Roman numeral six is the GFOA award for the 2019 audit report that I presented this time last year. So I always like to point this out. This is the, the award you're seeing here is for the 2019 report. So last year, after I presented, this, that document was submitted to the GFOA. It was graded against a pretty thick set of rules and guidelines to make sure that you guys are complying with not just accounting rules, but transparency rules. Like, this document should be reviewable by your citizens and also comparable to other governments who received the award as well. So it was graded, and then the document was either assigned a pass or fail, and you guys passed. You got the award, which is fantastic. You are in the minority of our clients. Not all of our clients receive that award, because it's hard work. It takes a lot of work for your staff to, to have financial statements that are in great shape and to collect all the data necessary to achieve this award. So congratulations on your third year in a row for receiving that, and we fully expect the 2020 report that we're talking about tonight will be your fourth year. So congrats on receiving the GFOA award for the 2019 audit report. From there, I think I will next talk about the results of the audit. That's why I'm here tonight. Let's talk about how the audit of the financial statements went. So if you wanna follow, I'll be looking at pages one and two next, just looking at the opinion letter. So, as the agenda states, and as I mentioned earlier, we finished the audit for the fiscal year ended September 30, 2020. Under the terms of our audit agreement with the city, we made some agreements, and so did the city. The city's management agreed to accept responsibility for the financials that are included here. The reason I mention that is we do assist in the drafting of these financial statements, which is very common for local governments in Texas, but management has reviewed these, accepted responsibility, and so I'd just like to point that out during these meetings. However, we made some agreements as well. We agreed to perform the audit and issue opinions on the financial statements, which is why I'm here tonight. Now, the audit is about four or so weeks' worth of hard work for us, a little bit of wrap-up time afterwards, but it's a year-long process for your staff. They don't get to just wait until we show up and suddenly fix everything and let us audit it. It's a year-long process. So I do wanna commend and thank Roxanna and her crew for all their help, not just during the audit, but for keeping a great set of books and making our, our job easy. Everyone we work with is very forthcoming and transparent as well, and as an auditor, that makes me feel very comfortable when I'm doing an audit. We ask questions. We immediately get answers and discussion, and we feel comfortable that things are on the up and up here in Jacksonville. So you'll find at the top of page two, we were able to issue, after the conclusion of all the work, we were able to issue what's called an unmodified opinion. It's just the, the new fancy term for a clean opinion. So that's, that is the highest level assurance that we can provide on financial statements. So it should give you great comfort that the books here are in good shape, you've got a strong financial staff to, to make that happen. So we commend everybody involved for achieving another clean opinion this year. Congratulations on that. Any questions on that financial statement audit or the opinion I just discussed before I change gears a little bit? So the next piece I wanted to talk about, you guys should also have a copy of this. It's the single audit report. It's a separately bound document, tiny document here. So this is new for Jacksonville. I'm not sure if y'all have ever had a single audit, at least not while we've worked with you. So I wanted to take a minute to talk about this, explain what it is. To me, it's a really terrible name, single audit, because technically, we did two audits. As an auditor, I did the financial statement audit we just talked about, and then this separate grant audit essentially is what this is, but I didn't get to name it. So it is, it is what it is. But to put this into perspective and explain what we did and why we did this, let's take a look at page five, if you would. So page five is what we call the schedule of expenditures of federal awards. And what you're seeing here is a listing of, in Jacksonville's case, it's just four grants, four federal grants, and how much for each of those federal grants the city expended during FY20. And so the grand total that you see at the bottom, 901,687. If that total exceeds $750,000 for one fiscal year, that requires us to perform what's called a single audit or a compliance slash grant audit. And so when we do a grant audit, we take one of these four programs, and we select the grant program based on size and risk factors, and we gotta dig down into the details. So the grant we selected this year is the Coronavirus Relief Fund, the, the grant that was provided by the feds from the CARES Act to relieve the city of some of the costs associated with reacting to the pandemic. And so you guys spent about $844,000 during FY20, and our job during a single audit is to dig down into that grant. Did you spend the money on the right things? Did you report to the federal agency as they required, et cetera? There's 11 or 12 potential rules that could fall into place that we have to test. So single audit is hard work for a city in general. This particular grant didn't exist this time last year, nor did the rules that the city had to follow. They were created along the way, and honestly, the rules we have to follow to audit it weren't released until December. So this is all a very new program, which to me means high risk if it's new. Fortunately, we were able to, again, issue a clean opinion on Jacksonville's compliance with this particular grant, which is commendable. We, we tend to have more findings in the single audit arena with our clients. In general, it's just hard. You know, there's tons of strings attached to federal grants, but to get a new program that didn't exist this time last year and to handle it correctly and not have any findings after an audit is really commendable. So again, congrats on a clean opinion in the single audit arena here. I'm happy to be able to report that. While I'm on the topic of compliance, I thought I would mention, there's also a report in here called the Government Audit Standards Report on page one and two. This is nothing new, but the government auditing standards are a separate set of standards we have to follow as auditors when we're auditing a government. And I like to point it out, because it, you guys are held to a higher standard than a for-profit company would be, for example. As an auditor, when I audit a government, I have to look at your internal controls under these standards and have to look at your compliance. So do you have strong controls over your financial reporting process, good policies, good procedures? That's one side of it. The other side of it is compliance. Are you following laws and regulations, grant agreements, contracts, things that would affect your financial statements, like procurement is one thing? So we dig, we dig down into compliance for procurement. We look at your internal controls, and if, if we had a deficiency, a problem in procurement or anything like that, we would have to report that to you guys today. So again, I have good news on this, on this topic. We have no deficiencies to report under government auditing standards. So I mean, really, of three reports to, I'm presenting tonight, all three of them are as good as it could get. So this is the kind of presentations we like to do. We have good news. Any questions on the single audit or financial statement audit that I could answer for you guys? guys, or an area you'd like me to drill down into? I'd be happy to.
I appreciate your, your report, I really do.
You're very welcome. Thank you all for having me tonight. I appreciate being able to stand in front of you.
So, we need a motion to approve the audit, is that correct? Number seven, okay. Discuss and consider with possible action accepting the findings of the 2019-2020 audit. So, I will entertain a motion for that.
I'll make the motion.
Got a motion by Councilman Hubert Robinson, seconded by Rob Goen. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion passed.
Thank you.
You bet. Appreciate it very much. No, item number eight is the second reading of Resolution 03-2021-01 in support of economic development incentives. And this will be Mr. James Hubbard, President of the JEDCO.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. James Hubbard, Jacksonville Economic Development Corporation. Before we jump right into the reading, just a little bit of background. The Jacksonville Economic Development Corporation is seeking City Council approval of this resolution in support of two economic development projects. These projects were noticed in the Jacksonville progress on February 13th, and a public hearing was held at the meeting, JEDCO Board of Directors meeting on March 2nd. The first reading of the resolution was at the March 4 City Council Agenda Workshop. The first project is reimbursement of an amount not to exceed $125,000 to GVD construction for targeted infrastructure to support development along Loop 204 or 456. Specifically, this is for the engineering and installation of a sanitary sewer main to service properties running the loop. The second project is an amount not to exceed $300,000 to fund JEDCO matching grant programs in the current fiscal year. At the February 9 meeting, the City Council approved a mid-year budget amendment to the JEDCO budget. The purpose of this approval via resolution is to satisfy the state law regarding the notice of expenditures related to a group of projects such as those eligible for downtown redevelopment or demolition program assistance. This increase is due to the success of the matching grant programs and was unanimously approved by the JEDCO Board at the February 2 meeting. I'm happy to answer any questions you have before reading the second reading.
Did we ever get the easement?
The easement's still underway. In fact, the city manager and I have a joint meeting tomorrow with architects and engineers for the subject property, and we have a verbal commitment to secure the easement.
And this is money we've already allotted once before. We're just changing the purpose of this money.
Yeah, thank you for that clarification. The exact amount of not to exceed $125,000 had been previously approved for the City Council, and it was to purchase some real estate. In lieu of that, and the topography that that land would have, would have yielded for JEDCO, the JEDCO Board elected to provide support for the sanitary sewer line. The nice thing about that as well is, again, this is going to benefit multiple, you know, probably 30 or 40 acres of developable land there along that 204-79 corridor. So, it's a long-term play for a lot of properties.
Very good.
All right. With that, here's the second resolution of number 03-2021-01, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Jacksonville, Texas, approving projects of the Jacksonville Economic Development Corporation that may include land, buildings, equipment, facilities, expenditures, targeted infrastructure, and improvements found by the Jacksonville Economic Development Corporation's Board of Directors to promote new or expanded business development within the city of Jacksonville, providing for separability and establishing an effective date.
Very good. Thank you, James.
Thank you.
Item number nine is to discuss and consider with possible action the resolution in support of the economic development incentives that we just heard. So, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the resolution in support of the economic development incentives.
Okay. We have a motion by Councilman Rob Goen, seconded by Councilwoman Mindy Galick.
Galick.
Galick. Any discussion?
Need to be better.
If not, all in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. Our next item is our consent agenda. Of course, items under our consent agenda require little or no deliberation by the council. We approve them all at once, items A through E. You see those there? I'll entertain a motion to approve those. Have a motion by Councilman Mindy to approve those, seconded by Councilman Hubert Robinson. All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. Our next item is to, number 11, to discuss and consider with possible action calling for a moratorium on issuing and renewing itinerant vendor permits. Mr. Gregg.
Yes, Council. All right, Council, sorry about that. This is a moratorium issuing any new vendor permits and also allowing current food vendors to have a one, one more extension that will go to March of 2022. There will be no other permits extended for any other type of vendor for this time period during this moratorium. Under these, the conditions will be, again, no new permits will be issued under the moratorium. Existing food truck vendors with an active permit will be allowed to renew one time on their renewal date. This one-time renewal will expire March 10, 2022, and will not be renewed again unless the council takes additional action. No other vendor permits other than food trucks will be renewed. This moratorium will not apply to door-to-door vendors. The purpose of this moratorium is to give staff and the council time to work with our consultant to help us with the planning and the zoning and the regulations dealing with Highway 79 and 69. Planning concepts has been secured through JEDCO's assistance and JEDCO funding to help us reestablish and look at in great detail the zoning and uses and permitted items along the 79 and 69 corridor. This moratorium just gives us the ability to handle this in a timely manner, as well as give clear direction for these vendors moving forward in the future. The plan is the city will have a location set up for all of these type of vendors, a single location with the proper facilities to allow safe operation. So, that is what this moratorium is regarding.
And this will not affect the vendors at special events such as Tomato Fest, that kind of thing?
That is correct. All special event are not covered by this moratorium. So, the Tomato Festival, school programs, stuff like that, baseball park, we can still address those as special event permits.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion that we call for a moratorium on issuing and renewing itinerant vendor permits.
We have a motion by Councilman Rob Goen, seconded by Councilman Hubert Robinson. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. We did 12 earlier, we'll skip to 13. Discuss and consider with possible action approving an emergency repair to water well number five.
Yes, Council. So, surprisingly enough, and we'll go more into this during my comments, but during the recent winter storm, we were able to maintain our water system without well five. Prior to that storm, we were getting in the process of getting prices for this well because we did not know what the repair cost would be. The low price for the repair cost is $56,498, and that is with Weisinger. And so, we did get three prices, not knowing if it was going to go over the $50,000 threshold. We did not go out and solicit formal bids at the initial time, but seeing how this is for the public water supply, we recently had the winter storm, we would like to declare it an emergency and go ahead and get these repairs done. Randall and I had a conversation with the owner of Weisinger last week, and he indicated that this would be about a 10-day turnaround time, 14-day turnaround time for the repairs to get well five back online. So, staff's recommendation is to approve the repairs for water well number five by Weisinger in the amount of $56,498.
I'll entertain a motion on that item. Got a motion by Councilman Hubert Robinson, seconded by Councilwoman Mindy Galick. All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. Item number 14 is to discuss and consider with possible action a policy on increased water bills due to the recent winter weather.
Yes, Council. So, staff's recommendation on this is to give our residents a choice. If they sustained a water line break or damage during the winter storm period and they get that repaired by a licensed plumber, or they did the work themselves because that is allowed under our code, that they have two options. The first option is that their previous three months' usage, which will be November 2020, December 2020, and January 2021, that will be the month bill that we use, the average of those three months. And so, they can request the amount of their water bill be reduced by the repair cost up to the amount of their three-month average for water. Okay? So, if their normal water bill is $50 for water, their bill went up to $100, and their repair costs were $25, they would get $25 back. That same situation, if their repair cost was $250, they will only go back to their three-month average on the water. This does not address sewer, and this does not address sanitation on the water bill. It is just your water usage. Sanitation for our residential customers already have a cap. We do not charge for sewer over a, about 7,000 gallons, I believe, 7,000 or 10,000 gallons. Option two is we will give them a 50 cent, or excuse me, 50% discount on their water usage for that month bill during the winter storm. Again, they have to show that the leak has been fixed, either by receipts that they fixed it themselves or by a plumber. So, they have a choice to pick either one or two. Any remaining balance, we will also offer a 12-month payment plan. That payment plan will be without any interest or any penalties or any late fees assessed to it. The only thing the payment plan calls for is they have to stay current on their bill, and then they pay 1/12 of the payment each time to stay current with the city. Again, on the option two, it is based off of their previous three-month average, which was November, December, and January of 2021. So, this is staff's recommendation. We discussed it at our workshop. I think Randall, if he, if I remember the numbers right, we actually have already billed 3,800 customers approximately for their bills during the time of that storm, and during that time, we've only had like 25 or 30 people request any type of assistance with their water bill. So, I think what we did during the storm, which we will address here later in my comments, I think prevented a lot worse situation, and I think a lot of our residents adhered to the warnings and took the proper steps to protect their water pipes, water usage at their house. And so, that is staff's recommendation.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion, and then we can discuss if we need to.
I'll make a motion that we approve the policy on increased water bills due to the winter weather.
Okay. We have a motion by Councilman Rob Goen, seconded by Councilwoman Mindy Galick. Any discussion we need to have? Does everybody understand?
Randy, Greg, I think, you know, now may be a good time, or Greg may address it later, but at my house, I've reached out to the city, I've, they have my email address tied into my water meter, and electronically, every single day, if I have a water leak, I've had two or three over the past year, and, you know, 8:00 in the morning or so, I've gotten an email from my water meter telling me that I have an unusual usage of water. It doesn't tell me where it is, it doesn't tell me how many gallons, but I can call and ask. You know, am I looking for an Olympic-sized pool, or am I looking for three or four gallons a minute kind of a thing? And it helps me identify my leak. So, you know, I would invite, I would encourage every single person out there with one of our new electronic meters to reach out and sign up for those online notifications.
Anybody else have any discussion, question? Okay. All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. Item number 15 is to discuss and consider with possible action a request by the Cherokee County Historical Commission to apply for a historical marker to be placed at Hazel-Tilton Park, recognizing the 1800s Railroad from Jacksonville to Lufkin.
Yes, Council. If you recall, during our workshop, we actually initially thought about pulling this from the agenda, just because we did not know all the fine rules and regulations when, when it was first presented to us. Staff followed up, and we have a lot clearer process moving forward. As both our speakers said, if, if we apply tonight, it will be 2022, probably before the earliest this marker gets here. When the marker gets here, there is still some leeway on when and where we can set it. So, staff is recommending approval of the application, and then we will work with the Historical Commission to make sure it is set up in an appropriate location with our final plan for that park. We certainly do not want to delay this after we got this updated information, so that is why this has been placed back on the agenda, and staff is recommending approval.
Very good. So, I'll entertain a motion on that agenda, item 15.
Motion is approved or applied for the historical marker to be placed at Hazel-Tilton Park.
Okay. We have a motion by Councilman Mindy, the second by Councilman Hubert Robinson. Any discussion? And just for clarification, when, when we talked about pulling it, we were concerned that you might get that thing back in about six weeks, and we didn't know where to put it. So, it wasn't that we weren't in support of, we just didn't know the timing, so.
For the last three or four markers, we keep the markers stored in our office in Russ until it's the appropriate time.
Perfect. Okay. Great. Okay. All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. Item number 16 is open forum for mayor and council. Anybody want to talk about anything? I think Greg's going to probably cover the, the week that we turned into Alaska.
The week.
Exactly. Yeah. But I, for one, I'll just make a comment here. I came to work every day, I have an old four-wheel drive pickup, and, and City Hall was buzzing during that week. The downtown was, was pretty much empty, but I've heard over and over again of people that, that said they don't know how we did what we did, that they came in from Tyler, and Tyler was still having trouble, and we had the county with our motor graders clearing our roads. So, hats off to all those people that really worked hard that week to keep us ahead of that storm, so.
I know it, Randy. I was one of the ones that went to Tyler, that down the street was not used, well-maintained as Dr. Boaz, and so, and I also thank the police department, fire department.
Sure.
EMS, Greg Smith, put in a lot of long hours, so, I mean, the leadership of this community was nothing but.
Tremendous, oh yeah. Exactly. We found a great use for the new four-wheel drive pickup. I think we put policemen in them. And actually went out and got some of the trade-in from Tim so we could continue to offer public safety. So, that's, that's all I have. Anybody else? Then we'll go to the city manager's report.
Well, Council, I'll just go and start with what happened. It was an unbelievable event. While we do not have our official after-action report done for this meeting, we plan on having our after-action report done. We've already had our first after-action meeting with all the people involved, and what our staff did was absolutely amazing, and it was everybody. And we had our water plant crew, George Crawford, and those guys were absolutely amazing. They were working 20, 18, 20, 22 hours, 24 hours a day. Why FEMA doesn't let people work 24 hours a day? Why FEMA doesn't let people work 24 hours a day? We had people monitoring that at all times. At one point in time, we were producing, producing 3,000 gallons of water a minute. We got very, very lucky. Randall and I have had these conversations, as with everybody involved, Joe and Keith as well. We were prepared, but we also got the lucky straw that day, and our residents absolutely helped us. James Humbird was totally instrumental. I've never had an economic development director in my entire career that I have called, and he was calling businesses personally. We had off-duty firefighters. We had every single detective. We had fire marshal. We had fire chief. We had EMS coordinator. We had 10, 15, 20 people looking for water leaks for about four hours on the north side of town. As soon as we would find one, we'd have to fix another. I think our water crews fixed about 18 to 24 leaks in about a 24-hour time period between two days. We actually brought in a crew from CAPS/CAPCO out of Bullard, and they were instrumental in helping us. Randy brought up the four-wheel drive pickups. Absolutely was a lifesaver for us. Made us all function fully. Police, or excuse me, the fire department responded to less urgent calls in their four-wheel drive truck, not to get the ambulances and the fire trucks out in the weather. It was just a safer, easier way to get to the calls. Our AMI project, as Rob mentioned, I can't even begin to tell you what it did for us. We were able to, with the staff that came in from our Public Community Services Department over the weekend and towards the end of the storm, we were able to run reports and notify people that they had leaks. We had leaks that were 1,000 gallons an hour in residential homes. So to Rob's point, was it a drip or was it a leak? 24,000 is you're filling up an Olympic-sized swimming pool. That's the type of leaks we found, and the only reason why we found them is because of that new system. That new system saved us countless of hours helping us locate where potential leaks were because as part of this project, every one of the residential meters gives us a pressure at that meter. So we were able to check pressures throughout town almost in a real time by pinging the meters and getting feedback from the meters to where we knew where our pressure problems were. And where we had the pressure problems, we were able to get the crews up. And that's why, why I said earlier, we had 20 people looking for water leaks because that's where we were having some of our pressure problems. The guys worked countless hours. When we had the boil water notice for the one part of our town, that was a very serious situation for us. We did not want to do it, but we had to do it in the safety of all of our residents. We were able to secure bottles, pallets of bottled water, and our Parks Department came out on Sunday and set up the point of distribution or POD. We were able to give all of those bottles of water out in about four hours. We actually carried several cases, if not, I don't remember the total number, but we had one nursing home. And so our Parks Department actually went and delivered that to those residents at that one nursing home that was affected by the boil water notice. So overall, I agree, our staff did an amazing job during this entire time, all the police officers, all the firefighters. But we have pictures, and these guys don't get the recognition, but this time they absolutely deserve it, is our Public and Community Services guys hit it out of the park. I mean, they were in sub-zero weather, getting soaking wet. And then we had problems with our residents thinking that, oh, let's go drive around and see what the guys are doing. And so we had to get police officers, fire, and J.HISD police helped us to keep people off of our employees when they were trying to fix a water leak. And it happened several places, and I can put up all the barricades I want to, but a barricade's not going to stop a car. Only another truck or a car will. And so when we put out all those notices, we were very, very serious, trying to tell people to stay off the water. Melissa, I cannot tell you the number of text messages and phone calls that I had Melissa trying to get all of the information out on social media. And if you look at some of our posts, you know, 50,000 hits. One of the best posts, and it turned out to be one of the funniest ones, is our police department had $124,000, or excuse me, $124,000 hits when they were out there directing traffic. The other part is, many of you may have seen the video of one of our officers that had an unfortunate incident trying to get to his car and became a social media hit trying to get to his four-wheel drive truck going up the hill. Fortunately, that officer was not injured in his slip and fall down, back down the hill, but we didn't. And again, it's just hats off to every one of our employees that were there that worked tirelessly all during the week, all of our department heads. We really came through together as a community, and this community helped each other. And so I'll end with that, and then we will have more on our after-action report next month. We'll get into the fine details. Just a reminder, next, or this month, we will have the State of the City on Thursday, the 25th. It will be at 6 o'clock. It'll be at Pigples Church. It will be an open presentation for all of our residents to come and get the State of the City addressed. This was supposed to happen last year, but due to the pandemic, we postponed it. We had it scheduled for earlier this spring, and again, due to the numbers and the concern for our public safety, we chose not to have it. But we will have it on March the 25th. Hope everybody can come out and do it. We will also record it and then rebroadcast it on the city's YouTube channel. Obviously, congratulations to Nina. She's already left us for becoming our new sergeant. Our audit award, congratulations to Roxanna. This is one of the best audits you can ever get. When you have a city in a pandemic year, put $1 million back into reserve funds, that is in tribute to all of our hard work, of our employees, and the path and the guidance this city council has given us in adopting the processes that we're moving forward, and we are certainly excited about that. One last thing, and this is, I want to thank the police department and Public Works for all their work getting ready to open up and help with the traffic. There's been some misnomers that PD's out there, and we're providing private security for Chick-fil-A. That is not the case. Chick-fil-A paid for the officers that were working on the Chick-fil-A property to help with the traffic. We did rotate somebody by and around the new traffic barricades, but all the signage is up, and we got all that done right after that storm to have basically a very smooth transition and opening up a new business that in a lot of other locations has backed up. Our traffic engineer did a great job helping us come up with that solution. Robert, thank you to you and your guys because I think that solution is going to work. And once it becomes final, then we will make it a lot nicer and prettier for that area. And with that, that is all I have.
Okay. Thank you. At this time, item number 18 is close executive session City Hall Conference Room per Open Meetings Act, per Texas Government Code, Section 551.071. Consult with our city attorney, 551.072. Real property in 551.074. Personnel matters, city managers, annual review. And then after that, we will reconvene back into open session for any action if necessary. So we will stand adjourned temporarily. We will reconvene in regular session at 8:17, and I think we have probably a couple of items.
Yes, Council. I would like to recommend that the city manager and city attorney be able to negotiation, negotiate a lease agreement with Wesley Beard for property located on North Jackson.
Okay. You've heard that. Did you make that as a motion? You didn't make that as a motion.
I can't make a motion. I'm just making a recommendation.
Okay. So I will entertain a motion.
I motion we approve the sale of the property or whatever.
Whatever. Okay. We have a motion.
Negotiate rental.
Negotiate.
A lease of the property.
Correct. Okay. We have a motion by Councilman Mindy. Second by Councilman Hubert Robinson. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. And I would like to make a motion to extend our city manager's current contract to March of 2023. And I'll make that as a motion. Okay. Motion made by Mayor Randy Gorm, seconded by Councilman Rob Gowan. All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. That is all we have, so we will adjourn from the council meeting at.